...in self governments. So, we hope you will be here this evening with more and more important about your four candidates and their perspectives on various issues. So, the questions that the County Council put out a call for questions and they were submitted over email. And then we had a committee on the council that got together and picked the questions here out of all the ones submitted. Yeah, okay. So, as Carol explained, the first candidate gets more time than the other three who respond. Each candidate will answer every question. And I have here in this perpetually sealed envelope eight questions that we picked as our primary questions. We think we did do all of those. And this will rotate which candidate has the first response to each question. And there each will get to be first two times. And so, in order to ensure I play middle role in which candidate, which topic each candidate is to speak about first. I'm going to shuffle them all here.
Do you want to pick the last one?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll just pick up a question. And then, so, my plan is to only read each question once at the same time. So, I'll read the question and then all four of you will respond. I will, to be fair, if any candidate requests me to reread a question, I will do that.
So, you turn the mic someone?
Yep. And they get an intro, right?
Yeah.
So, to start with, we have an opening question. And each candidate has 90 seconds. And we'll just start here. I've got the mic from the microphone zone. And the question, first question for all of you, please introduce yourself and tell the audience the top three priorities you plan to address as a county commissioner. And each have nine seconds.
My name is Stephen Myers. Family moved here in 1959. We live in a very unique part of Washington State. The rural area that we grew up there, I grew up in, has changed significantly. Maintaining our rural character is important to me. We have, my focus is certainly going to be on our infrastructure and maintaining our EMS services, our law enforcement, urgency services, our boat ramps. I believe that we need to make sure that property owners have a opportunity to repair, replace, fix their property without undue burden from county regulations. It's extremely important that we have that. Right now, it takes weeks and weeks to get a opportunity to, get a permit, just to simply replace your roof. If that happens during the storm, that can be quite significant and financially impact the families, particularly fixed income. And, thank you.
My name is Marie Shimada. I'm together with my partner Cody Haynes. We live actually just up the hill from here in Clinton. I graduated from South Whitby High School, as did Cody. After that, I went to the University of Washington, followed by the University of San Diego School of Law. After spending three years in a coastal desert, I missed home. I came back to the Pacific Northwest with the ultimate goal of spending forever in my hometown on Whitby Island. The top three priorities that I want to talk about tonight, the first would be staff retention and staff morale, and the belief that we can provide a higher level of community service if we care for our people. The second thing would be the idea of bringing you all and making you all feel included in local government decision-making, and really bring the community into the fold. And the third would be the pressing need to address huge issues that we're facing in the future, such as housing for all and the protection of our natural resources. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Wanda Groome. I have filed to run for county commissioner, District Number One. I've been your county treasurer for eight years. I have over 40 years of accounting, finance, economic analysis experience, and I'd like to bring that to the county level. I am also active in many community organizations and currently employed at the city of Langley as their finance director. My focus, my three areas of focus, as elected, would be to bring financial accountability to the county and make sure we have efficient use of financial resources. Second thing would be have coordination, cooperation between the county and the districts that would enable increased development to sort of the population that should be coming here in the next 20 years. That would be the port districts, the cities, and the towns, and water and sewer districts. Last, I'd like to make sure that we have process efficiencies at the county level, more technology to make sure that things are smooth, and better negotiated union contracts to assure staff retention, so we don't have knowledge walking out the door. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Melanie Bacon. I'm the incumbent county commissioner, and I want to thank the Clinton Community Council, the Snow Island Libraries, and the Friends of the Clinton Library for sponsoring this first forum for all four candidates for District One County Commissioner, and thank all of you for joining us here tonight. Thank you. I feel blessed to be allowed to be county commissioner. My four top issues are healthy marine and forest ecosystems, water resources, affordable housing, and transparency of government. I'm known for my ability to find wins for our residents by working collegially with partners outside of my political party, for my accessibility to citizens, and for my emergency management work. During my first term, I led the fight for six new affordable housing projects in Island County. I oversaw significant improvements in the county's building permit process. I negotiated a climate resiliency resolution, secured millions in ARPA funds for community service groups, obtained important increases in funding for emergency preparedness, led updates of critical safety and welfare codes, including the animal welfare and the fireworks code, helped citizens become involved in a comprehensive planning process, established a new era of government in the sunshine of the weekly newsletter detailing county board decisions initiatives, and much more.
Okay, thank you. So, now I'm going to shuffle my questions. I don't know which one is coming up. And I'm going to start over here. So, Melanie, you'll be the first to answer this question, and we'll just rotate the first.
Should we try a different mic?
That one? That's me. Okay. First question. How should the county deal with our homeless population and those with mental, illness, and substance abuse issues?
Well, I think that we all know there isn't a magic band-aid for that one. This is not, just an Island County problem. This is a problem, a nationwide problem. It's a global problem. Back in the eighties, my sister was a psychopath at a home called Lennerman in Southern California. And it was a place where people with, people's family members who were unable to take care of themselves, or unable to care for themselves, they had a place. And in the eighties, it was decided that it's not against the law to be crazy. And I can appreciate that. It's not against the law to be crazy. It's not against the law to be homeless. It's not against the law. And so, dealing, how do we deal with the homeless? The best way that we could do that is to try to help them, to understand there are programs available for them. We have, and the county, we have so many really terrific behavioral health and mental programs to help people. We have, you all probably know there's a, I don't want to identify, but there's a person on South we meet that we see regularly who is sleeping on the sidewalk. We go, we go see him. We, we say, we can help you with this, 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 and this. We can send you to this place to live for a while, to get this type of help. People have a right to decide for themselves when they're going to take the help. The best that we can do is to provide the help and let, you know, let it just happen.
I'm not going to stand up for every question, so I'll introduce myself by standing up. So, my take on this subject is, yes, we do have a problem here. It's not as bad as what we have across the water in Seattle and in Everett. I believe in helping people who want to help themselves. And I know that if people have an engagement in the program, and there's measurement in the program to show successes, it's worth continuing to spend money on those programs. The county has a lot of services and behavioral health resources available for our population that's disadvantaged in that way. I don't like the idea of people sleeping on the streets and on the sidewalks any more than anybody else. The law dictates what we can do to, to work with that. What I do believe that I want to stress also is I believe that for future facilities to help these people, they should be located closer to where the services are, which would be in Oak Harbor. Thank you.
I'm also not going to stand because my table mate literally cannot sit on my chair. A couple of things to answer this question. I believe in supporting our rural healthcare system so that they can provide the continuation and expansion of mental health services. That would also include supporting services provided in local school districts that are meeting people when they are still in youth and providing services to them regarding mental health and other services. The second would be continued support of the Human Services Department at Island County, which is providing a plethora of services that address this issue, and leveraging their services and their partnerships to support the community organizations who care so deeply about these issues.
There's no doubt that as a, as a nation, as a state, even as a county, that we have to do better outreach. We, we certainly have to provide better treatment programs within the county and work on the mental health issues, starting in grade school, starting in junior high school. I think a lot of the anxieties our younger generation is feeling is because of lack of hope. And if we can offer that hope, working through different community groups, to get our young people into trade organizations, whether it's construction, whether it's the service industry, letting them know that there's something out there. Not every one of our kids are going to be, they're not going to be engineers, attorneys, doctors, lawyers. And there's a great opportunity to advance our education system to help them work, to improve their life.
Okay, thank you. So, the next question, and I've been told that the people in the kitchen can hear us talking, but they're not sure who's talking, so I will just say your names. So, this question, Wanda, you're first. And the question is, the county has discussed changing Clinton from a rural area of intensive development to a non-municipal urban growth area. Do you support this? Why or why not, Wanda?
So, this is Wanda. I'm sorry, I'm not a planner, so I don't know exactly what those divisions mean. I, I understand what a rate is. I can only deal with that. So, I'm unsure if that would mean more development here or less development here.
Freeland is currently a non-municipal urban growth area.
Okay. So, I, I think that Clinton would be a great place for more development, being right on the edge of where the ferry comes in, that everybody has to drive through. I'd want to see these businesses able to flourish more. It's perhaps development is in, on the hound for especially housing. If the sewer problem, the septic, the ground problem could be fixed, that would be great for Clinton, because it's a wonderful gateway to the side.
Then, Marie, let's.
This is Marie Shimada. I read the 2016 Com Plan, I spent some elements of reporting, which talks about the fact that as of right now, because of the rate status, there cannot be expanded sewer services, but that an NMUGA would allow for that, but that the tension point back in 2016, based on public feedback, was between what the county could get done, but also the will of the people of Clinton. As you all stated earlier, there's an upcoming community forum to get feedback from the Island County community, but particularly the Clinton community, to find out what Clinton residents want their future to look like. And I would support, the majority of the Clinton residents would like to see the county first deal with their time.
Thank you.
I'm surprised you can't tell my voice. It was shocking to me. Steve Myers here. We're, I think the county's projected to have another 20,000 residents show up, and hard choices need to be made. Nothing can happen without housing, affordable housing, and all without infrastructure. If the community in Clinton decides that they want to get rid of the rate and build towards higher density use, that will promote and allow greater density in here for housing, for workforce housing, maybe some of our younger folks will stay here longer and make this their home and not move off for lack of opportunity. It's, it's really important that, that we look at how this infrastructure is going to be developed.
Good.
I don't want to be rude, but, in this way, anyway, I'm sorry. This is Melanie Bacon. And so, Freeland has an NMUGA, and they still don't have sewer, unless business and industry wants to go. So, having an NMUGA doesn't necessarily mean you're getting a sewer. The thing is, though, one of the things that I, my major initiative since I've been a county commissioner, was to find septic and sewer solutions, new technologies in septic and sewer solutions that would cost the people so much money. That's the reason that people of Freeland and want some cost of a fortune. So, we, this gives a state to give the county money to study emerging septic and sewer solutions, just for this very reasons. We bring sewer to Freeland. And then, if, if this became an NMUGA, we would perhaps, I hope, have acceptable septic or sewer solutions for Clinton. So, I'm hoping that that will be the thing that stops it, that will be the issue in this decision.
Do you want to switch?
Thank you. So, the next question, then Marie will be the first one to respond. You want to switch that?
I think, because that one's doing weird stuff.
You want to give us a new one?
You want a new one?
Thank you.
So, the next question, and Marie will be the first responded. How do you see the Clinton Community Council having an effective voice with Island County government?
This is Marie Shimada. Keep going. The Clinton Community Council was formed to work with Island County about the pressing needs of the Clinton community. I have had the privilege to be able to meet with members of that board, including a past member of that board, who has felt like they have seen a revolving door of people from the county who come to work with them, that has hindered the ability to move the project forward and get work done. And they feel like some of the county's representation has not been worthwhile in achieving the goals that have been laid out for years now.
Community outreach is important, and having a receptive government is the key to community outreach being effective. And I fully intend, as commissioner, to be very serious about each and every community in Island County. There's unique needs, the needs of each community, and how our decisions at Island County affect them.
All of these.
So, I come to the Clinton Community Council meetings every month. I come to these meetings, and I pay money, actually, I volunteer to pay money, so that I share the rent, because I meet for an hour with citizens before the Clinton Community Council meeting, and then I contend that meeting. And so, I think that that's one way that the Clinton Community Council can continue to have some voice at the board, is if the commissioner continues to be president at these meetings, continues to take the issues that this, this body raises, and takes it to your progressive board, which I do. Thank you.
He's so good.
This is Wanda Groome. So, this is exactly what I was talking about when I was talking, when I mentioned one of my priorities was to improve coordination, cooperation between the county and the districts that were involved in advancing growth for housing purchases in the county. I don't think that's happening now. Being in the city of Langley, I, I see firsthand on how they struggle, because they're a small municipality, have limited funds, undergoing a huge infrastructure project, and don't necessarily have the expertise with funding that they need. As, as elected commissioner, I would work to change that. I would work with all the communities in the county, as well as the county council, because I'm not actually in the municipality, but we'd be looking to increase development.
Okay, thank you. And then the next question, Steve will respond first. Please, your question is, the state of Washington has projected significant growth for Island County. How do you think the county can work with developers to mitigate strain on resources and protect the environment?
I think it's going to be truly five that the county work with developers, private contractors, private interest landlords, through the development process. Affordable housing cannot be done with a one-size-fits-all taxpayer-funded housing. It needs to be done in private-public partnership, is one avenue. Other avenues, the infrastructure needs to be built out adequately for the future, having access to emergency services and septic systems. There's some really, really unique treatment facilities out there. I know the owner of, not to yell at her, but I know the people who are developing this personally, and involved in selling some of this equipment. It's pretty neat, they can get class B water out there, it's almost drinkable. I've watched them drink it. I wouldn't do it. It's, it's quite a unique system. Those systems can provide water for irrigation, you could use it for non-auto watering in your home, as toilets reset the way you're not through. And it's got to be a joint effort. Thank you.
Derek, just being so good.
Okay, that's two things. First is, we're working, this is one of the reasons the comprehensive plan, maybe the single most important thing about the comprehensive plan, is we need to ensure that that plans for the dense areas to become more dense, so that we protect the natural areas, the wild areas, the areas that are so important to all of us. So, we have to do that. Another thing that we have to do, we're going to start to a mixture, I'm pretty determined on it, is we need more code enforcement officers, and we need to put teeth into our code enforcement, there needs to be penalties if people are violating county code. And we need to be really adamant about that. So, yeah, we, we need to insist, where you can go through house, and if you violate that very same system.
But Keith, can, um, Wanda?
This is Wanda Groome. I think that, I don't know if you were aware, that legislature enabled a program called tax, tax increment financing. The districts could adopt, boards can adopt, the cities can adopt, and counties can adopt it. As I mentioned in a forum we had an old ago, it's about a month ago, I've been involved in private-public partnerships, and I worked with the city of Issaquah, as well as Issaquah Highlands. That wouldn't be appropriate here, of course, but it was a very mutually acceptable and beneficial relationship between the city and the real estate developer that worked with them, and Washita, to build a highway there, a change that led up to that area. Tax increment financing is something that can be done with regards to tax revenue, being the increased tax revenue attributable to the development, being used to fix the infrastructure. And I don't think it's ever been done in this county. Sorry, I'll talk about it. I'd like to see that happen.
This is Marie Shimada. I'm partnered to a builder, so the idea of increased growth is really important to me. I also have spent the last two and a half years working in a beautiful area up in the reserve that does a lot of land preservation and conservation. So, those ideas are also very important to me. When it comes to balancing growth, as well as understanding how to protect our critical areas and natural resources, I want to see continued and increased partnership with the municipal governments about what the county planning department and their planning departments would like to see achieved. I also would like to see increased streamlining and visioning with organizations that are addressing a lot of these issues, both on the housing and housing needs side, as well as on the side with organizations addressing the protection of our natural resources.
The next question, then Melanie will go first. The question is, there is an affordable housing crisis in District One. The county must be a part of the solution. How will you, as a commissioner, work towards solving the problem?
So, as I said, I'm heavily involved in affordable housing. We, we are initiating six new affordable housing projects since I became county commissioner. There's the two, though, that we, we need the most push on right now, that I'm the most concerned about. The first one is permanent supportive housing, which is the kind of housing that we need to do for people who, you know, say you're, you're a single mother, you got in a crisis situation, you have your little kids, you're just trying to figure out what, how to get your life together for a period of time. We need someplace for you to live for three months or six months. That's permanent supportive housing. And we need about 500 of these places. We have none right now in Island County. The other one is workforce housing, people who are made to be between 80 and 120% of average median income. And right now, average median income for a household is about $95,000. So, you'd think that it would be easy for people with $95,000 to be able to find housing, and they can. So, those are the two that we're really, really pushing for right now. The county did, as you probably may remember, we enacted a tax a couple of years ago that's 10 to 1%. So, every, 10 cents on every hundred dollars that you spend goes to an affordable housing tax, that is for building affordable housing. We spent, we put, I'm going to quit, as I could go on this forever.
This is Wanda Groome. With regards to affordable housing, I think the key is to look first at housing being built on publicly-owned properties. That would be school district property, port-owned properties, and others, if they can be convinced to donate the property or sell it at a reasonable price. I think Habitat for Humanity's got a great model for sweat equity homeownership. I know that not everybody qualifies for that level of, they have to qualify for a mortgage to do that, but I like the idea of people putting in work to build a house. They are especially adaptable to community infill type of development and planning projects. The affordable housing tax that Commissioner Bacon mentioned, I believe, is to be shared with other districts in the county. And I'm not sure if it's been done, or perhaps it has been done in form of grades.
This is Marie Shimada. I agree that there is a need for more emergency affordable workforce housing. I don't have any doubts that the county is currently trying to address this. I think what we need to see more of is public-private partnership, both in the area of literally, you know, building and working on those projects, but also in the area of working with our community partners to help advocate for what the need is among community members who don't yet think that we need affordable housing in this community.
This is Steve Myers. Infrastructure is the key to requiring or getting any density for business or for affordable housing of any kind. That starts with zoning. Our planners, our zoners, our zone team, zoning planning teams need to focus on where we're going to have that density, and then not spend three years of an investor's time trying to get a permit. The cost of money, the velocity of money, the loss of income potentially, because it takes three years. Each of the projects I built in Freeland took me three years to build, three years, two years to get a permit, and three years to get started in construction. And it's a significant impact, so we need to change how we operate our building permit and our land use codes.
Okay, thank you. So, Wanda will be first to respond to this question. Verbis County employees are represented by five different unions, each with a collective bargaining agreement. What are your views of organized labor and the collective bargaining process?
Great question. This is Wanda Groome. I had a union in my office when I was, my employees were members of the 1845, when I was treasurer. When I was treasurer, I was frustrated by the fact that the contracts took so long to be settled. After they expired, it was either six months, it was a year. Although raises were negotiated or were given to millionaires and employees. One thing I would like to see is some type of career path built into these contracts so that people will stay, they have somewhere to go, and they have something to look forward to. We wouldn't see people jumping departments or leaving the county, go somewhere else. The other thing I'd really like to see is possibility of merit increases for employees who are extra special. With unions too often, everybody's promoting 30-year, or they get a raise, COVID, whatever. It would be great to be able to have some kind of career after reaching those contracts.
This is Marie Shimada. I support unions. I'm using a union printer for all of my campaign collateral. I've been endorsed by UFCW 3000 and FCIU 1199. And I believe wholeheartedly in working with people who are with one of those county unions and helping them achieve the deals that they would like to see so they can continue working here, so that they can continue living here, so they can provide for their families here. I believe in proactively seeking out feedback from them to know what would help with those collective bargaining agreements. Feedback about what would make our county better. We have to support our workers.
Steve Myers. I started a small business here, Sound Electric, 35 years ago. Built it from less than $100,000 a year to multi-million dollar contracts throughout Western Washington and Alaska. I was a union contractor. I negotiated union contracts. I understand the new ones that the employees' unions go through. I understand what the employer's needs are. We've always worked through all of those issues. The employees that I have working with me through 191 and 1547 in Alaska were always happy with my approach to negotiating these contracts. I am currently supported by the International Painters and Adeline Trades Union. They have over 6,000 members in five states like we, and they do.
We have six units that they can carry, number five. We have the office workers and the public works, the sheriff's deputies, the corrections officers, the staff in the sheriff's office, and the prosecuting attorneys, who are teachers. And the reason, for example, the prosecuting attorneys became, they unionized, became teachers, because they weren't making enough money. That's why people unionize, is because they want to be treated fair, they want fair compensation, they want fair benefits, they want fair working conditions. And that, you know, I spent my whole career at human resources. That was what I did, was try to find some way to treat employees fair, because that's how, that's why employees will stay with the organization. That's what results in high morale, that results in good customer service because the employees are happy. So, yeah, when I first became the HR director, we had a very, the organization had a very contentious relationship with unions. By the time I left as HR director, we had a very polite relationship.
Okay, the next question, Marie will be the first to respond. "The Clinton Community Council has been asking for traffic calming measures in Clinton for years, as noted in the Clinton Gateway Plan. How will you help make this happen?"
This is Marie Shimada. I agree that traffic calming measures are incredibly needed to increase traffic safety for people in their cars, but also for the pedestrians and cyclists who try to use this Clinton corridor in order to participate in the restaurants and retail. I believe in leveraging the partnership between the county commissioner, who does sit with the Clinton Community Council Board, to be a voice, to really build clout and bring in those partners from Washita to be able to address glaring safety issues in this community. It is disappointing to me that for the past number of years, there hasn't been progress in this direction. It was spelled out in 2016, and I haven't seen any calming measures. So it's important to me, if elected, that I would work with the Clinton Community Council Board to advocate, as well with the Washita and other state agencies, about what would make this a safe area for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles.
Because this road is a state road, I think it's imperative that the county commissioners take the Clinton community seriously and demand meetings with the Washington State Department of Transportation to address this issue. Calming measures, speed bumps would be tragic for the trucks and shipping. But if it comes to that, something needs to be done, because I've, we've got way too many aggressive drivers, not just in Clinton, but all over Island County. And, you know, we see the result of the aggressive driving and speeding on our county roads, and it's pretty horrific at times.
Thank you, this is Melanie. So, for the first three years I was county commissioner, I was the chair of the Island Regional Transportation Financing Organization, the IRTPO. And one of the things the IRTPO passed, it was just last year, we got a grant from the state for creating a program called Safe Streets for Halls, which is a program that then, we're working on our plan right now, and then we're going to be able to go to the state to try and get some funds to pay for the things that we want to do. But it's, the intent of that is to make this place, a safe place, for people to ride their bikes, to watch, to pay attention to all of these different modes of travel that people use that are not just cars. So I just want to assure you that we're aware, we are at the county, very, very aware of the need for traffic calming, and we are trying to find solutions to make that happen.
This is Wanda Groome. I remember seeing a presentation, I think it was here, years ago, Aunt Valerius was doing it, and it was bump outs? Bump outs and diagonal crosswalks, and I'm trying to think of the colors. I either already received a grant, or anything was paying me a grant. I'm not sure what was going on. But anyway, I would love to see the traffic slowdown coming off the ferry. It's very dangerous, it's a race. My husband's in that every night when he gets off the ferry on his motorcycle, and he's being passed by everyone. I would like to see that happen and would work with the Clinton Community Council to make sure that those improvements are made.
Okay, thank you. So the next question, Steve will respond first. And call it guys, for your mic, Rob is there? Okay. "What role does agriculture play in Island County? We see local government having a role to play in supporting our small farms and food producers."
Agriculture's been very important by Island County from the early days. Having our local food resource is very important, not just to the farmers in the area, but it's important to us. Going to the local farmers' markets, enjoying fresh produce that's made that are provided is a key to any active, healthy community. So I think Island County government can help through permitting process and supporting our agricultural businesses and help them to thrive in that area, hands-off approach. And a lot of these farmers take very big care of their land. They don't really need to be told what to do. And they're happy to do it, they enjoy it a lot. Thanks.
This is Melanie. So we have a number of programs that apparently to try and help farms. It's part of the magic of Island County, right? These fields, these farms, and the access to locally grown foods. So we have a lot of programs. We have a public bargaining system, which is a way to help people who own agricultural properties to be able to pay a lesser tax. That's one of the many things. We also, just a couple of years ago, passed a new code type of, you know, we have to give permits, obviously, for people who are selling food. Then we passed a special permit, created a new type of permit to make people who have forest lands don't have to pay as much as they used to have. At the same time, it is really important for public health that we pay attention to things like people selling food to the public. We have to make sure that that food is safe. We have to ensure that it's washed. We have to make sure it's refrigerated and so on. Oh, sorry.
This is Wanda Groome. I believe in keeping family farms together. I think that farms are very important part of this Island County community. I think the problem occurs when you have family farms that are in joint planning areas where development may be besotted to occur. And then consideration has to be given to some type of a balance. Are you going to keep the family farm together at the cost of not having affordable housing or housing maybe that middle-income families could afford? And I actually wrote a letter to the editor about this a couple of years, about a year and a half ago, it was published in the paper, and it's on my website. I just think the public needs to provide input over what they would like to see. And maybe that could be done through town hall meetings and public input provided online. It's your conservation futures that fund the purchase of some of those conservation easements, so you should have a voice.
This is Marie Shimada. A staff member from the American Farmland Trust recently visited a farm on the Bay Island and said, "Island County has the weakest agricultural policy of any surrounding counties." That's unacceptable to me. I co-launched the Agricultural Resources Committee of Island County, which initially started as an attempt to lobby the county for an official advisory board for agriculture, the way that other surrounding counties have. We were told no. We continued on as a grassroots organization. We recently submitted a grant request so that we could retain a technical expert to provide policy recommendations vetted by the agricultural community to provide to Island County for the comprehensive plan update. That's the type of advocacy I'll be bringing to this role.
Okay, thank you. I would just say that efficient use of time is a qualification, and only as candidates qualified is to be going through our initial set of eight questions. So we were prepared, we've got extra questions here. So, we're ready to start back with Melanie, that's the first to respond. And the question is, "Would you support taxes and/or fees on short-term rentals and seasonally vacant homes with the proceeds dedicated to develop affordable housing in Island County?"
Thank you, that's Melanie's question. So that's one of the issues that we do have on the, that we are going to be talking about the comprehensive plan update. We recognize, the Board of County Commissioners recognize, that one of the reasons for our problem with not having any rentals in Island County is that people, during that period of time where there's a lot of cash out there, they came in and every time the property would become free, they just would suck that up for cash. And then they put it all, they ridged it out as an area, because everybody wants to vacation, you know, right? And so we don't have any rentals here. And so the comprehensive plan, we are going to be looking at Airbnbs, or we're looking at search and rehens, we're going to be looking at all of those things, because we recognize we do have to come up with a solution. And we're looking at what other jurisdictions are doing. So whether it's a tax or it's something else, we all know, we haven't had a conversation yet, but I want to assure you that that is one of the important things that we're going to be addressing in our comprehensive plan update.
This is Wanda Groome. I think you'd have to remember with regard, I think taxes and fees on Airbnbs are a good idea. They already do pay a 2% or 4% lodging tax, which is returning the county to be used for promotion for more tourism. I think that you'd have to remember that if you punish these homeowners that lend out their house for a occasional rentals too much, you're going to come back and affect the tourism and the taxes we get and that, the revenue we get in our area of businesses, visitors. So I think taxes and fees are a good idea. Be a benefit to provide affordable housing money. And, but I think you have to remember those other things. Langley's going through this very thing right now. They just decreased the number of permits that they allow for affordable rentals.
This is Marie Shimada. To answer your question directly, yes, with the caveat, I would not support that if a better solution was brought forward by community members. I also would not support it for structures currently owned by full-time Island County residents. Thank you.
Steve Myers. As far as providing or committing additional tax to private property owners, I'm not in favor of that at all. There is a tax, as Wanda said, on the LaTelle Hotel. It's the tourist visitor's tax that already exists. There's better way that we can come up with, and I need to dig into it. We could have a little bit more information. But on its face, raising taxes on people that have a second home up here and come up here and occasionally lease it out to friends, family for a weekend, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. So the next question, Wanda will be first. "In an effort to reduce our wildfire risk, would you support a code change which adds fireworks to the stage one Birdman?"
That's easy. Yes, I would. I was so glad to see fireworks legislation. I know that there are people in this county that just like to blow things up, burn on top. Some of them also live on the other island. But I think in terms of our safety, we have hay fields, we have pets, we have veterans with PTSD. I don't like the booms. You know, if it was regular fireworks like we used to play with when we were kids, sparklers and whatever, I don't like these bombs. I didn't know that most of those come from outside the county. And I bought in, so I guess I would. I wanted to mention also, I think that I would also support having the fire districts be appointed as the fire marshals rather than be the Island County Sheriff.
This is Marie Shimada. Yes, I also would support that. I'm the child of a firefighter. I'm aware of fire risks. I believe we should be doing everything possible to help mitigate, minimize fire risk. Thank you.
Boy, that's a tough question to answer. For purpose of fire, I think any time anyone's negligent, like whatever they're doing out on private-public property is a risk. Banning fireworks during a safe display, I think might be a little misguided. I need to look at it a little bit closer. We still have public displays. Are those displays, fireworks, going to be banned along with private use as well? Is it just going to not happen anywhere at all in Island County? We're talking about the fire loading specifically. That would be the fire marshal's call from them. Thank you.
I could talk about this over a long time, too. So I wrote the fireworks code that was recently passed. It was passed after three different times. I tried to write a fireworks code, it was secondly banned. So now more is going to be started next year. With regard to the question, though, that has to do with the Type 1 Birdman. And as I said at the board meeting, is that just this morning? Oh my God, is this still Tuesday? Yeah, just this morning, I said, at the board meeting. That it's insane that we have a Type 1 Birdman right now. It starts, I think, this weekend, Type 1 Birdman. It's already screwed. You can't go in your backyard and start, you know, a fire. We can't do that. You can't go burn stuff, but you can shoot off fireworks. It's insane. So, which just strikes me as insane. So absolutely, absolutely, I support including fireworks into the Type 1 Birdmans.
Okay, thank you. And then Marie will go next, first on the next question. "There's federal infrastructure money available. How can the county best utilize those funds?"
This is Marie Shimada. I think we can best utilize those funds by continuing to support projects related to plans that would revolve around the infrastructure improvement we already have in place. I believe in leveraging those funds to work with our municipal partners to help better provide better infrastructure. There are complaints right now about how some restaurants have to shut down because they're inside of buildings that have aged infrastructure. How are we using those funds? How are we using those funds to directly impact and benefit local business owners and local residents? And that's what I would want to work on.
You repeat the question for me.
There's federal infrastructure money available. How can the county best utilize those funds?
Well, I'd like to see the county work on emergency services with those funds, providing access to our shoreline, protecting our shoreline, better access to our boat ramps, sewer systems. And thanks.
So there's so many projects the county wants to do right now that we can't because we don't have the money. And so if we could get infrastructure dollars, and we, and we actually did hire a contractor in Washington D.C. to help us to get this. And so they, they've gotten us some funds. We're hoping, we're hoping, we're hoping for the transfrustation like in Coopville, which is not infrastructure dollars, it's other dollars, but an elevated boat ramp at Robinson Beach. Let's fix the Crawford Road mess. Let's do a roundabout over Bush Point Road. Let's, see, I have some other things I had to list, actually, that I want to work on the Clinton to Ken Corridor Trail. I mean, if the infrastructure dollars would help pay for replacing our failing of piping in our, in our water pipes, those, if they're failing, all of your water systems that are having a problem with this right now, that we can get infrastructure dollars to help with that, that would be amazing. So there's so many projects that may be used, those dollars score, and we're charting.
This is Wanda Groh. I agree with Commissioner Bacon. There are so many projects. High on my list would be the development sewer systems to allow for development and found more housing, because now all of us can afford million-dollar homes these days. And the roundabout at Bush Point Road, which already did so many fatalities, and there are other spots, Clinton or on the highway, where it would be beneficial to have roundabouts to slow down traffic and allow people to merge the side streets.
Okay. The next question, Steve will be first. One impact of sea level rise has increased saltwater intrusion into the freshwater aquifers which supply most Island County residents with potable water. How should Island County respond to this very real threat?
Well, that'd be a place for some of the infrastructure dollars that we were just talking about. The, there's desalination plants that have been around for decades and decades. And, you know, better water conservation, I think, is quite important. We can all conserve water a little bit better than we probably do. And that will take some load off of the saltwater intrusion. Our aquifers seem to be fine, but there are some that are seeing that intrusion. And I think enhancing the treatment of those wells would be a key to helping the communities that are affected by that.
This is Melanie. We're not really seeing saltwater intrusion into the aquifer again, so I want people to not be worried about that. But it's a thing that we're looking towards in the future if we can take some steps. We, what we are seeing are wells in neighborhoods that aren't adjacent to the shore, and many of them are seeing saltwater intrusion. And so they're having to build, buy other properties more inland and build new wells there to support their neighborhood. So clearly, this is a problem. We are planning to have actually a meeting, a co-work session on this very soon to talk about this because we had to recently give a franchise agreement for a neighborhood for that purpose, and we acknowledge this is a thing that we're going to send more and more and more of in Island County, only have to identify how we're going to solve that problem. So I don't have the solution. We have acknowledged, and this is probably, we are, we were, we were.
This is Wanda Groh. I read something about this recently. I think it was one of the government publications, that there was a process by which people with wells that were experiencing saltwater intrusion in their, their well water would stop using that well for a while and then use it, drill another well. And the original well would eventually, from the non-use, be able to cure itself of the problem. So I don't know if that's an option or not. It is a serious thing. Of course, have to do continual testing. I know we have a lot of shoreline properties with people with wells on the, on the shoreline that. I think the other alternative would be, if it's possible at all, to have the incapacity for piped-in water at Oak Harbor House. And that would be a very expensive proposition.
This is Marie Shimada. I commend the county for approving the water study. I wish we had forward-thinking leadership that had thought to do this water study prior to being months deep in the comprehensive plan update. There are experts, even in this room with us tonight, who have been raising this issue for quite some time. We need to listen to them so that we can appropriately plan for the future.
Okay, thank you. And so Melanie will be the first of this. And similar question. Sea level rise caused by climate change is real. Shoreline communities are being impacted and some homes are becoming uninhabitable. How should Island County respond?
Yeah, that one, that one's really hard, and it's just going to get harder. It's just going to get harder. I have people who come to me crying because their house is public and they can't, they're not allowed to build it all, and which is the reason why you don't allow to evolve like others. This is a problem that shoreline communities all of Woodrow are facing right now. And I'm smart, but I'm not that smart. I don't have the solutions to that. But it's a thing that we have to pay a lot of attention to. I mean, we have some, some things you can do, right? We encourage people to move their homes back. We encourage people to put their houses on the studs. We encourage people to do softshore armoryings. That's, that's more conducive to ruring-friendly type of people's studs. But it's, we can't fight for our nature over time. We are never used as bow. And we just have to figure out how we're going to do it.
Wanda Groh? I, I believe, Commissioner Bacon, there's no easy solution to that problem. I'm hoping that with the county's rewriting of the building code, that some of the inconsistencies can be eliminated, or people who do have this problem will be allowed to provide some kind of protection in the film of a concrete wall or whatever it takes so that they don't have the flooding.
This is Marie Shimada. I'm in this race because over a year ago, an elected official in Coopville said to me that they had no plans to address sea level rise because they would be dead by then. And I think that's an inappropriate way to serve this community. The Green Resources Committee has published recommendations about how to help address this. It's my understanding they're still working on continuing ideas to address this. I think we need to listen to staff and listen to experts as they bring forward recommendations for how to address this issue.
The west and south side of Wibby Island have significant greater impact on storm damage and shipping going up and down the straits than the eastern side of Wibby Island does. Allowing people to protect their property is one of the key elements of homeownership. We have to provide opportunities and a way for people to protect their property. If it's in the interim, so be it. It buys them time to figure out other solutions. If the community living on a beach has an opportunity with the community, all ingredients to put in a bulkhead to protect their community, then I think that should be one of, one of the things that the county government tries to help them accomplish, to protect their property.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes our individual questions. Now each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statement. And we're going to go on to first.
Thank you to the Clinton Community Council for holding this forum, and thank all of you for coming. I think the citizen engagement on South and Central Wibby surpasses anything that I've seen anywhere else. So thank you for coming and staying involved. I decided to run for this office because of my background in finance and accounting. And I don't think that there's ever been a board member who's had that type of experience and somebody that can act as a watchdog over the way the county spends its money. I think that there should have been a measurement of the programs that the county's invested in to be sure that the results and the successes are documented and that they're worth the money that's being expended on them. I know that the county and the cities depend on federal grants, state grants, for a lot of their funding issues. Those grants are not free. They come out of your pocket. So I want to make sure that your money's being responsibly spent. I, I know accounting people aren't especially interesting to listen to. Nobody's ever accused me of that. But I will tell you that everybody needs an accountant. Either you are one or you need one, whether it's for your taxes or your investments or to keep track of your budget. So I'd like, I wanted to bring my skills to the commissioner level after being your treasurer for eight years. I hope you're interested in what I have to say here tonight and get more information on my website, and if you're very interested in hearing what you have to say and any other questions for me. And I also would commend all these people for standing up, running for office, for serving in office, because working for government is not an easy thing. Things do not happen in both places, take time and cooperation. Thank you again.
Marie Shimada, again, I'm not going to stand. Thank you so much to the Clinton Community Council and the partners you worked with to put on this event. Thank you to everyone who came out today. Many of you I recognize either from my events or because I've met you while I was outdoor bailing, or because you represent an organization that has tried to advocate for something and you've chosen to reach out to me and meet with me. God willing, Cody and I get to give birth to a sixth-generation Wibby Island resident at some point in the future. What is on the line for me is their future, our grandchildren's future. When you get your ballot next month, I hope you vote with that future in mind. It's not just a vote for you, it's a vote for this entire community. I am so blessed to be up here today with the other people running for office. I am thankful to Melanie Bacon for her years of service to this community. And I'm incredibly honored to have been endorsed by former Island County Commissioner Helen Price Johnson. I hope to follow in the steps of her leadership of what community building really looks like, really raising the voice of people, meeting people where they are at. Again, thank you so much for coming out tonight. It's huge that you all are participating in local democracy and in local government in this way by packing this community hall tonight.
Steve Myers. The next four years are going to have a significant impact on the following 20 years. How we build our infrastructure, where our densities are, how we look at where our money's spent. Just because you understand the cost of something doesn't mean you understand the full effect and value of where those dollars need to be spent, how they're going to be spent. I spent over 50 years in the construction industry. All of that has been in public works. The Law &amp; Justice Facility in Coopville, I was involved in that from the ground up. Seventy-five percent of the schools that have been built here on Wibby Island, I've been involved in their remodel from the ground up. And harbors, docks, ferry terminals throughout western Washington and Alaska, I understand what needs to happen in the public works sector, where our dollars need to be spent to get the most bang for the buck. Our taxes have been going up, and I don't want to see another project be submitted by Island County that just throws money in the bottle. I want to make sure that those dollars are spent appropriately, that we do a little bit of research, avoid any unintended consequences of throwing money in a bottle, just in the idea that we're, we need to show that we're doing something. So thank you.
Hi, Melanie here again. Sorry, notes. I'm ready to re-election as your Island County Commissioner because there are so many things that I've been working on that I want to see through to completion. I want to see that elevated boat launch we're planning at Robinson's Beach and the roundabout at Bush Point Road and the Crawford Road expansion and the Clinton to Ken's Corner Trail. I want to move us through implementation of new septic sewer technologies that we're working on right now and build an affordable plan for replacing our failing water piping infrastructure. I want to see our county employees trained to help you in emergencies, and I want to see you and your neighbors trained in how to prepare for emergencies yourselves. We're just at the beginning now of building shoreline ecosystem resiliency in response to sea level rise and implementing carbon reduction actions in response to climate change. I want to see how far I can push those initiatives over the next four years. I want to see us capture our stormwater runoff to fill our aquifers instead of letting that precious water all flow out into Butchett Sound. And most of all, I want to guide us through the completion of our comprehensive plan update and then adopt the codes needed to protect this treasure, this jewel that we all love so much in the face of the coming population growth. I committed four years ago that by 2030, there would be more trees in Island County than there were in 2020. That is still my commitment. I is the only candidate for the knowledge, the experience, and the strategy to protect the magic that is Wibby and Camino Island. Thank you.
Now, I think people can applaud.
Okay. I'd like to thank all of the candidates for stepping up to serve the community and... And I was going to say, thank the audience for following the rules of being quiet and going loud. So that's okay. It was a good audience. It was a good event, I think. And now we have time built in for the candidates to mingle and talk to people informally and thank you all for coming.